All right, so now we're going to enter our Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, May 29, 2018. And the first topic on our agenda is to review Gilbert Street Concepts for Bicycle Accommodation. Looks like Kent Ralston is going to speak to us. Good evening, Kent.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. My name's Kent Ralston. I'm the Transportation Planner for the city. And the topic, as the Mayor mentioned, is the Gilbert Street Transportation Study. For the presentation format quickly, I should be able to get through the presentation in 20 minutes or so. I know you've got other items on the agenda. As far as the time, or excuse me, as far as the presentation format, I'll quickly go through the timeline and the purpose of the study, the overview of the study area, an overview of the facility types that were included in the transportation study, the findings of the study, and the staff recommendations. And Mayor, whether you want to ask questions as we go through the presentations at the end is...
Yeah, okay, we'll see.
As far as the timeline and the purpose of the study, it was initiated in the fall of 2017 at the direction of the council. It stemmed from a recommendation in the Bike Master Plan that was adopted earlier that year recommending that the Gilbert Street Corridor be further researched to see whether road diet could be implemented. Subsequent to that, we extended the Alta Planning and Designs Contract to do the additional work. The purpose was to determine available alternatives within the Gilbert Street Corridor to allow for improved traffic operations and safety for all modes of travel, in particular whether bike lanes could be added to the corridor or some other form of bicycle accommodation. The study included a review of existing studies, both the Riverfront Crossings Plan as well as a downtown traffic study that was completed in 2014, and encompasses the entire corridor between McCallister Boulevard to the south and Market Street to the north. The study included an evaluation of existing conditions, which has been completed, some stakeholder engagement, which has also been completed. That included an open house back in September, had about 30 or 40 attendees, and was fairly well attended. And then the consultant also had three stakeholder meetings with prominent land owners along Gilbert Street. One was with Southgate Development, one with the owners of the Big Grove Brewery, and then one with a member of the Clark family because of their, thank you, because of their apartment holdings along the corridor. There was also the development of three conceptual designs, which I'll go through this evening. And then the last thing, and the goal of the evening, is to decide what functional design we want to move forward with, whether that's bike lanes or several other options. Little bit of a slow reception here.
I thought for a second the time had stopped.
It sort of has here. I'm not sure what's occurring. Does it change on your screens, or is it just not changing on the...
It's not changing at all.
Well, hold on one second. Oh, now we got it. We're back. Sorry about that. So this here is an image of the study area. Again, the, in this image, the Iowa River is to the north of the image. So north is actually to the right of the screen, south is to the south, or excuse me, south is to the left of the screen. Again, at the far right is Market Street, which is the northern terminus of the study area, McCallister to the south. What this shows is just the, there were nine signalized intersections that were analyzed by the consultant. Those show up with the signals. And then there were also six additional stop-controlled intersections that were included in the study. Just a quick overview of the study area. As far as existing conditions are concerned, as we all know, it's a major arterial corridor that goes north-south through the heart of Iowa City. It's a relatively high collision corridor as it exists today, and I'll touch on that here in a minute. I can tell you that two of the top five worst intersections in Iowa City in terms of collisions are within this corridor. That's the Gilbert Burlington Intersection and then the Gilbert Highway 6 Intersection. The intersection, as it stands, has relatively poor access control. And when I say access control, I mean basically private driveways accessing private property. We also try and minimize, of course, alleyways and streets, but primarily we try to minimize the number of actual driveways to private property. And then I would argue that the corridor also has sort of three distinct sections, which I'll go through here in a moment. Also, a large student population at the north end of the corridor, as we know. As far as the future transition of the corridor, I can see it becoming a very vibrant commercial corridor in the near future, both with the Riverfront Crossings District and the Riverfront Crossings Plan, as well as our downtown's growing. As we know, we've got development both to the north and south of us here tonight. We can expect more residential growth and development in the Riverfront Crossing District, and we've already seen some of that with the Rise Project and other projects that are occurring down around the Big Grove Brewery. We anticipate more growth in traditional neighborhoods at the south end of the corridor, and I think we've already seen sort of a boom here in the last, oh, half dozen years or so, down around the Langenberg neighborhood, the Covered Wagon Drive, and so on and so forth. Also, in addition to that, in the Capital Improvements Program, McCallister Boulevard is under design this year and should be constructed next year between Gilbert over to Sycamore. And then I think we'll also see a lot of more recreation uses along the corridor, both with Terry True Blood Park, which I think has become wildly popular, and then with the new, what I'm calling River Park, down here where the old sewer plant was, between Gilbert Street and the river. Again, I think you can break the corridor up into three distinct sections, which I've got outlined here. As I mentioned earlier in looking at the corridor, you can break these down pretty evenly. You've got sort of the Market to Prentice Corridor, which is pretty similar to itself. That's the number one section. Number two, then, would be Prentice to Highway 6, which I think sort of has a different character altogether. And then lastly, Highway 6 down south to McCallister Boulevard, again, which is sort of different and distinct from the other two. We'll start by looking at the first section, Market to Prentice. As far as existing conditions are concerned, it's primarily residential and commercial in use. It's got good street connectivity. It's a grid-street pattern. It has good access control for the most part. Its average daily traffic, ADT, is about 9,500 to about 12,000 vehicles a day. It's obviously a four-lane roadway with a width of 45 feet, back of curb to back of curb. I think it's got minimal pedestrian barriers because it's got a good grid-street pattern. For the most part, you've got pretty good street connectivity, decent sidewalks. But I would say that it's got poor bicycle accommodations as it exists today. We've got on-street sharrows within the corridor, but those have largely become sort of out of favor with bicyclists, the way I understand it, and certainly don't help novice or intermediate users. It's got, this area's got large bike and ped generators, as we know. I say limited development potential, although I already mentioned we've got development both to the north and south. Lot of development potential downtown, but I think in this part of Gilbert Street at least, not a ton of development potential. And then, in the last three years, 2015 to 2017, there were 132 vehicle collisions and 14 bike and ped collisions. And of those 132 collisions, 159 had injuries, so no small amount of collisions in that section. Quickly then, moving on to the next section to the south, Prentice and Highway 6. You've got primarily, again, commercial land uses in this area, not so much residential as the area to the north. You've got poorer street connectivity, I would argue, because you've got the railroad tracks, at least along a portion of the corridor to the east, and you've got the river then to the west. You've also got relatively poor access control with a lot of driveways to private property. You've got the much higher average daily traffic in this area, from about 13,500 vehicles a day to about 17,000 vehicles a day. Again, it's a four-lane roadway, width is 45 feet. And I would argue that you have frequent pedestrian barriers because of either a lack of sidewalks, or in most cases, just undefined sidewalks because of all of the access points in the corridor. Again, I would argue you have poorer bicycle accommodations for the most part, again, because of those undeveloped sidewalks, or poorly designed sidewalks, I should say. Large bike-ped generators, high development potential. And then, for the last three years, you've had 108 vehicle collisions in this area, slightly less than the first section, and three bike-ped collisions. Moving on to the third section, identified here in red, from Highway 6 down to McCallister. Primarily, this section is commercial and public land uses. There is a little bit of residential to the north, but primarily commercial, with a lot of public land use in this area. You've got the forestry divisions building, you've got Napoleon Park, you've got the softball fields, and then again, Terry True Blood to the south. I would argue you have relatively poor street connectivity because we don't have a lot of east-west connections in this corridor, at least down towards the south. Relatively poor access control in the north portion of this, where all the commercial activity is occurring. And then you've got substantially lower average daily traffic than you do in the other two sections of Gilbert we've previously talked about. About 65,000 down in the southern end, up to about 12,500 vehicles a day in the north. This section is slightly wider than the first two. It's 49-foot back of curb to back of curb rather than 45 feet. I would argue as frequent pedestrian barriers because of, again, sort of a lack of sidewalks, or at least undeveloped sidewalks in certain areas. Although you could argue that the I River Corridor Trail parallels a large portion of this section, so you do have that. Relatively poor bike accommodations, again, large bike-ped generator, high development potential in a portion of this corridor. And then, in terms of collisions, it's a little bit lower in the last three years, about 44 vehicle collisions, one bike-ped collision, and 23 of those total included As far as the existing conditions assessment that the consultant conducted, again, they looked at these 15 different intersections, and I know these will be hard to read, but the takeaway is that they did a level-of-service analysis for all 15 intersections, again, the nine signalized and six unsignalized intersections from the north to the south. And for the most part, the corridor's behaving relatively well and functioning relatively well. Most of the corridor is operating with a total intersection, level-of-service at D or better. And if you remember from past conversations we've had, we rank intersections based on level-of-service, and it's a delay per vehicle, and we rank them from A to F, A being very good, free-flow traffic, and we'll rank them all the way down to F, which is essentially gridlock because of the level-of-service delay that vehicles are witnessing. We also can do the same thing for bikes and peds, but this particular image is just for vehicles. As far as the existing conditions assessment, the consultant also looked at collisions, which we've already talked about. This just happens to be one of the images that they shared at the stakeholder meeting last September. Now on to the facility types reviewed. So as part of the contract, I mentioned that there were three potential options that they were to come up with and review, and they have. All three utilize a four-to-three lane conversion or road diet, as it's commonly referred to, similar to what was recently done out on First Avenue between Bradford and the highway. As you may recall, the primary reasons to use a road diet are to reduce collisions. And the United States Department of Transportation and some other groups will typically state that you'll look at about 25% to 30% reduction in total collisions with a road diet. Some different periodicals and things will say it's higher than that, but I think that's generally what the USDOT will say you'll get out of a road diet. And they're also used where bike lanes are desired, because again, you've got that four-to-three lane conversion where you've typically got two lanes, north and south. You reduce that to one lane, north and south, and then you've got that center turn lane, again, typical to what we did on First Avenue, and then it adds that additional space where we can put in conventional bike lanes. That was alternative one, is the conventional bike lane option, which again is similar to what we did on First Avenue. Alternative number two is a cycle track, which I'll get into in a moment. And then there was a third alternative also, which was a shared path that could be implemented within the corridor. This next image is just a high-level review of what was included in the study. It sort of breaks up the corridor into those same three sections that we've already briefly discussed. It identified constraints, potential loading zones, and other improvements that can be made, and also just visually depicts how the three different alternatives could be implemented within the corridor. I'll kind of go through each one of these, but this is just a high-level review of what was included in the study, and I'll run through the pros and cons of each one of those alternatives for you. Alternative number one, as I mentioned, is the conventional bike lane option. The image on the screen depicts a typical 45-foot-wide back-to-back cross-section of a roadway, which is exactly what we have for both the first and second section of Gilbert that I discussed. The advantages of this are that you get all the benefits of a road diet with the reduction in collision, and then of course you can add conventional bike lanes to the corridor, a relatively low cost. The consultant ballparked the cost at about $236,000 for the entire corridor. There's an ease of implementation with road diets, as we know, and what we've experienced on First Avenue. It's essentially lane striping and some modifications to the signals. It provides an on-street accommodation, which I think most bicyclists would argue is what they're looking for in Iowa City. There's no sharing of space with pedestrians, which is also a benefit that I think you'd hear from most bicyclists in town. And there's no street width constraints for this alternative. You'll see in the next few alternatives, there's some pinch points in the corridor that make them rather hard to implement. The disadvantages of the conventional bike lane option are there's no physical separation from bicyclists, which is a drawback. And then, of course, the drawback is it's not comfortable for all users, and I would argue it's not comfortable for a lot of users. You certainly don't see a lot of families using conventional bike lanes without a physical separation.
Hey Kent, does this cost across the one, two, and three?
No, this is just for alternative one. Yep. Good question.
And they're not from, they're not doing the four-to-three all the way through, right? It's from Market to Kirkwood and then from McCallister to Highway 6 is what was in the packet?
Yeah, so what the staff's recommending is slightly different than what the, than what the actual consultant states is possible, and that's a good question, Susan. I think I can get into that here in a minute.
Okay, okay.
Yep. This $236,000 is for the road diet from north to south, from Market all the way through. Whether or not that's, you know, the way we move ahead remains to be seen, of course. And then I've got some more information to share with you about those other alternatives. For alternative numbers two, this is a cycle track option. And a cycle track generally, if you, again, look at the cross-section to the right, utilizes a four-to-three lane conversion or road diet like we talked about. But a cycle track generally, this is a bidirectional cycle track that can be implemented within portions of the corridor. But the general idea between, behind a cycle track is that you've got the space identified on the roadway within the existing curb, curb-to-curb pavement width, and you're able to have that bike facility on one side of the street which has bike lane in each direction. So it's a bidirectional bike lane that can be implemented within the corridor. It does not work well throughout the entire corridor because, again, we've got this 45-foot cross-section width, and it gets pretty narrow. So what this image shows is a four-foot buffer and 10-foot of space for the north and south bike facility. In some sections, that buffer'd have to be more like two feet, and you'd have to get down to a minimum of about eight feet for the bike lanes, which is the minimum recommended bike lane width, binacto. The advantages of a cycle track are you get all the advantages of a typical road diet. You've got an on-street accommodation, which I think is a positive. There's no sharing of space with pedestrians, which is also a positive. And you've got this physical separation from motorists. Now, that physical separation can come in a lot of different forms. What's shown here is kind of a Jersey barrier, kind of a concrete barrier. Some communities will use pylons, kind of white plastic pylons that are put down on the roadway. There's a whole host of options available. And I think the option that we would have to choose is sort of limited by that space. Again, there's constraint at the Iowa River, or excuse me, the Ralston Creek Crossing on Gilbert, and then under the Iowa Interstate Railroad, both south of Burlington Street, where the width is 45 feet, and there's really not a lot of extra space because of the bridge and then because of the railroad abutments. So it gets a little bit tight in those sections. I would argue that this is comfortable for more bicyclists than a conventional bike lane would be, certainly, because there's some level of protection. The disadvantage is that it's got a moderate cost, what I'm calling a moderate cost, of over $1 million. And again, you've got those pinch points that when we move into functional design, if this is the concept that you choose to move forward with, we'll have to work out how we address that when we cross Ralston Creek and then cross underneath the railroad tracks. It's relatively difficult to implement because of those issues. There's also some safety concerns with the contra-flow movement, so because you've got that north-south bicycle traffic all on one side of the road, as you can imagine, if you're entering Gilbert Street, you're going to have bicyclists coming at you from the right, which is not typically what you're used to, and not typically what you're looking for. We're used to having pedestrians come from the right, but not always bicyclists. So there is a little bit of a disadvantage there. And again, I already mentioned it won't work in constrained sections, so a little bit difficult to implement. And then the final alternative that the consultants worked through was a shared path, a shared-use path, it's often referred to as. In this concept, if you look at the image there on your screen, it has all the benefits of a road diet again. You're taking that four lanes down to three lanes. In this case, you're actually moving the curb line in. So in options one and two, you know, we're working with the pavement that we have. In this option, and it's reflected in the price, you're actually moving that curb line in then, so you've just got the three lanes of pavement, essentially. And then you've got about a 10-foot, and it'll vary based on the corridor, but 10 feet or so of space for bikes. And then you've got sort of the five- or six-foot sidewalk we already have for pedestrians. Now, typically, when you have that 15-foot section for bikes and pedestrians, you'll still paint off a path just for bicyclists or just for the pedestrians, so there is some delineation. But typically, it's not a physical delineation between those two uses. Again, you get the benefits of a road diet in the shared-use path option. There is physical separation for motorists because the bicyclists are no longer within the curb. And I would argue that this is probably most comfortable for the most users. This is something you'd probably see families using, so on and so forth. The disadvantage, as I mentioned, it's got a high cost of almost $3 million because you've got a lot of reconstruction activity that would have to occur, relatively difficult to implement. Again, you've got that safety concern with the contra-flow movement because you're not expecting bicyclists to always be coming from your right if you're entering the Gilbert Street Corridor. There's no on-street accommodation, which I think some bicyclists would argue is a bad thing. They don't want to be with strollers and dog walkers and that sort of thing. Even though you might be able to separate that space out with pavement markings, you know, you're still all relatively sharing the same pathway. And again, this has the same issue as the cycle track where we've got those constrained areas crossing Ralston Creek, south of Burlington, and then also crossing under the Iowa Interstate As far as the study findings are concerned, the study suggests that a road diet would generally improve the corridor, providing better accommodation for bikes and peds, and would improve safety for motorists, which I think most of us probably expected. It recommends that a road diet be implemented in the near term throughout the corridor with the addition of bike lanes. The study suggests that a road diet works well in the long term between McCallister and Highway 6, so starting at the south end between McCallister and Highway 6. In that section, you can have buffered bike lanes. They wouldn't be protected bike lanes with a physical protection, but actually buffered with maybe a one-and-a-half to two-foot wide painted hashed area, similar to what we will be installing on Governor and Dodge this year. The study suggests that a road diet works well in the long term between Kirkwood and Market, so I'm skipping that middle section and skipping to the north end here. And the study suggests that it would work well there. However, a sensitivity analysis that the consultant put together does indicate that a road diet may fail as soon as 2022 between Highway 6 and Kirkwood. So that middle section down around Big Grove and the other commercial activity down there, they're stating may actually fail as soon as 2022. And when I say fail, basically what they looked at was the average daily traffic we have today, with our growth projections using the MPO's model, shows that really we'll surpass kind of the threshold where road diets work. They're saying about 18,000 vehicles a day or so is where that threshold's at. Some will say, you know, 19,000, but the consultant was concerned that within a short period of time that will actually surpass that just with the sheer volume of traffic.
Can you linger there for a second?
Yeah.
I'm wondering about the difference in time of travel between Highway 6 and Prentice-Kirkwood under LOS D, E, and F. I mean, how do they differ timewise? I understand, you know, I understand the LOS concept, but time.
Right. I don't know if I can give you a really good answer because all corridors are going to vary, but the issue is that, you know, maybe between a D and an E, so level-of-service D may be in a level-of-service E. You know, it may be a minute to two minutes, let's say. And I'm just throwing those out there, we haven't studied that. The issue is, once you get into a level-of-service F, things, as you can imagine, when you're in a situation like that where everything just locks up, you know, because you can't get traffic in from the side streets, and you're actually just sitting, you know, there's cars in the intersection that have crept in on a red because they've waited so long, everything just gets bound up in a certain amount of time. It's sort of, it just kind of carries, it kind of gets carried away. And I would say, it was under construction, but Dubuque Street traffic earlier this year because of the Gateway Project, that was a level-of-service F. And there were times when the Church and Dubuque intersection was just blocked because people would try and creep through. And when that happens, you kind of lose all level-of-service. So that's a little bit difficult to answer, but I, you know, a level-of-service D to E may not be a huge deal, but once things start locking up, it's a little bit hard to predict what's going to happen. And that's where we get a little bit nervous about what their analysis showed. Because of that, because they're a little bit concerned, and because staff's concerned too about that section, they also recommended that the if and when that that section's reconstructed, and the Riverfront Crossings Plan has some images of what the reconstruction could look like, they would then recommend at that point in time, we also implement either protected bike lanes or maybe a cycle track, depending on how the council chooses to move forward. So in that instance, if we move forward with conventional bike lanes, let's say, in the north section, you know, say Kirkwood to Market. What we would then do if and when that section between Kirkwood and Highway 6 is reconstructed is perhaps be smart about what we do and put in protected bike lanes. The Riverfront Crossings Plan calls for on-street parking in that area. And if that was to be implemented, we could then put the bike lane on the backside of the parking, so you've got that physical barrier then for bicyclists. They also note that the I River Trail can be used as an alternative route during these difficult times, whether or not we implement bike lanes in that section or not. With a new park, what I'm calling River Park, I'm not sure what it's been named yet, but with that park, there's a, the trail is already in place, and you can avoid this section by using the trail. You can actually go under Highway 6 currently and then come out south of the highway onto Gilbert Street. So it actually provides a pretty nice connection if and when you're either having trouble getting through this section, or if we choose not to put bike lanes in this section. So then, moving on to staff recommendations. Staff agrees largely with what Alta came up with and recommends moving forward with a functional design. So right now, we've got these conceptual designs, but they would actually give us a design that we could work off of. We would recommend moving forward with a functional design and implementation of a road diet with bike lanes, the conventional bike lane option, in the near term between McCallister and Highway 6, and then Kirkwood to Market. We would not recommend moving forward with that section right now between Highway 6 and Kirkwood. And I think, Susan, that's what you were referencing earlier. Staff just doesn't feel comfortable with that, again, because we're not sure what happens. In all fairness, you know, all of this is based off traffic modeling. You know, none of it's, it's all sort of best guess prediction. And in all fairness, we could implement that road diet in the Highway 6 to Kirkwood section, and it could function well for 10 years. Alternatively, we could also implement that today, and it could fail at the opening day, which is, of course, what we don't want to see. So that, with what Alta gave us, gives us some real pause about moving forward with that section. In the interim period, I think we could ask the consultant to work on a functional design that helps bicyclists get to the I River Corridor Trail to avoid that section. I also think, in my own experience, that a lot of bicyclists, if you're comfortable with riding on-street now in a conventional bike lane, chances are you would just pass through that section and then get on the bike lanes again, either south of Highway 6 or north of Kirkwood. Likely, if you're already riding in the bike lane, you're going to be comfortable enough to just stay on-street, go those three or four blocks, and then get back in a conventional bike lane. In the interim period, I think we could use, as I mentioned, the I River Corridor Trail as an alternative route. And, you know, if, I think we just need to give some real pause to that section and wait and see what happens. For next steps, as I mentioned, the goal tonight is for council to provide us with direction on how to move forward. If we move forward with conventional bike lanes, you do have a CIP project currently in the Capital Improvements Program for 2020. There's about $300,000 budgeted. That $300,000 was budgeted for conventional bike lanes on Gilbert Street, and it was also a placeholder for the Market and Jefferson buffered bike lanes. So if you remember, there's some direction given to staff to turn the conventional bike lanes on Market and Jefferson into buffered bike lanes. I'm guessing with the $300,000, we could probably do both projects, but, you know, time will tell. And the other thing that staff would continue to do is to acquire right-of-way as properties redevelop along that corridor between Kirkwood and Highway 6. We've already done that with a few properties that have redeveloped, but we would continue to acquire additional right-of-way for a future reconstruction in that section. So I know I just threw a lot at you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. It's somewhat confusing, but the, I think the thing to take away is that there's a lot of different options in the corridor, and, you know, at least in the near term, I think there's some relatively cost-effective options if you, if you want to move that direction.
So in the, I don't have, I have it in my notes, but I can't remember exactly where it is. And I know it's in the study. It says something about 2030, we would need five lanes. What section was it talking about? What section was it talking about?
I don't recall that exactly, but it would definitely be the Kirkwood, yeah, the Kirkwood Highway 6 section. So in the riverfront crossings plan that was completed, maybe it's been two or three years back now, I can't recall exactly, in that there was sort of a preliminary traffic analysis done, and they at that time are seeing the same things that Alta saw, is that that section will likely have the heaviest amount of traffic on the Gilbert Street corridor into the future. It's a symptom, I think, of just the connectivity that it provides, but it's also because all the development that's occurring in the riverfront crossings area. The riverfront crossings plan, the cross-section they had, Kingsley, was basically two lanes north and south with dedicated turn lanes. And there's actually an image of that in the info packet.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then what we asked Alta to do was say, okay, they reviewed the riverfront crossings plan, and they basically took that concept, which has on-street parking, two lanes north-south with dedicated turn lanes, and then they put the conventional bike lanes on the backside of the parking like we talked about earlier. So if we move forward with a road diet, that would be, I think, the ideal situation in the future is to put that bike lane on the backside of the parking, if that's the way the development occurs.
So for option two, that's the cyclocross option. It's my understanding, the estimate for that was $1 million, and that's for all three sections?
That's from Highway 6 north. That's a good question. So what the consultant realized was, south of Highway 6, there's just not a high enough average daily traffic to really require a cycle track. So that million, it was, yeah, roughly $1 million is from Highway 6 to the north.
So do we have any cost estimate if we did option two, the cyclo-track option from Kirkwood to Market?
We don't, but they've already put together the preliminary estimates, so I'm sure they could tease that out, I'm sure.
That kind of goes to my next question. In general, from a direction standpoint, are you comfortable with us coming forward or providing you with direction as far as kind of a hybrid model? So kind of to Rockney's point, you know, certain elements, as you kind of articulated from the staff recommendations, won't necessarily, you know, have, let's say, alternative three across the entire one, two, and three sections. But you're looking at something where we may say, well, let's look at alternative one for this section, alternative two for this section.
Yeah, I certainly think you can. And what will be the challenge then in the design is how you blend those together, right? Because if you've got a cycle track, let's say Burlington North, hypothetically speaking, and then you want to convert to conventional bike lanes from, you know, Burlington South, the challenge then is how you actually design those so they all mesh together. I mean, that's the real challenge. I mean, certainly, we can move forward with, I mean, we can attempt to do that, but I don't know until they work through the functional design what's actually possible and what's not. I think clearly choosing one of the options and not blending them is probably easier from a design aspect. That doesn't mean it can't be done.
From my looking through it, the one thing that, just to mention to the people who did this, some of their, some of their diagrams were showing northbound and some were southbound. That was very confusing.
Right, it is confusing.
You're used to thinking, okay, I'm going south, and wait, but this one's north and trying to figure out which side of the street things were on.
I noticed the same thing.
Yeah, okay. My preference is to start with option one. I think, I think the idea of trying to mix different ones together, I just, I mean, I've just gotten back into riding in the last year, and I look at that cyclocross option and think of, I'm confused already trying to think how I'm going to turn and where I'm going to turn, and it just seems like there's the potential for more conflict at intersections between bikes and motor vehicles if you're on, quote, "the wrong" side of the road. I think as a city, as we're starting to move to these road diets, and I think that's a real positive thing, I think helping people get used to it, just the road diets themselves and the conventional bike lanes north of Kirkwood and south of Highway 6, I think we really need to wait for that middle section to redevelop. And I think, as you said, Kent, I think we have a lot of cyclists in this community who do a lot of riding and ride on that section and will continue to ride, even though obviously it's not as safe as we would like it to be. But if we can get the connection to the trail well-marked and easy to get back and from there to the street and et cetera, then people who are more comfortable that way can easily do it and not feel like they're going, you know, miles and miles out of their way. Plus, it takes them through that nice new park that we have down there. So to me, this moves us in the right direction with, I think, hopefully a reasonable cost with something that's really going to help bicyclists. It's going to, I think, also help motor vehicle traffic in this community get more used to how to really operate, hopefully in a more responsible way for some people, with the bicyclists on the road. And it also gives us that opportunity. To me, we're not giving up that opportunity to go to one of those other options later on because really, by starting with the first option, we're basically restriping. And if we decide later that we, you know, because of road reconstruction in some area or other development, that we want to go to one of those, the second or third option, which is going to be more costly, cause more construction, we could always take advantage of circumstances later on to do that.
So I would generally agree. I think that, going back to the hybrid concept I was talking about, one of the things I heard specifically on the campaign was, you know, just the feeling about safety riding on the street. And so in generally, you have folks that can do it and prefer doing it, but then I think, you know, the majority of people I talked to wanted that dedicated bike lane, but like with, I'm not necessarily so much in favor of the cyclo-track piece, but more from the standpoint of how are we, what kind of buffer are we providing? If it's just a stripe, I feel a little bit less comfortable than, I know, you know, plastic or, I mean, one person said a concrete barrier. I don't know if we can go that far. But I guess that's where I'm looking at that one and two piece of it. So if it is, and that's where I'm thinking of, it also maybe depends on the section because I think, I feel a little bit differently going out towards south of Highway 6 than I do in town, just because of the level of traffic that we talked about. But that's where I'm at from kind of that hybrid standpoint. So I would agree with Susan. I would want to do something that isn't necessarily going to force us in a particular path right now, but I do think that we do need to present a level of safety element to bicyclists. But I also like the fact that pedestrians have their own space, and so that's why I'm between the one and two piece.
My recollection is too, is south of Highway 6, isn't there already great cycling infrastructure south of Highway 6 as it stands now?
Yeah, on-street, I mean, there's a wide sidewalk for a portion of it.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. It cooks right into the trail down to Terre Treble.
Yeah, and that's the thing about the whole corridor is we've got the Iowa River Corridor Trail that runs the whole length of this section. It stays with the river, of course, so as you get downtown, that trail's a little bit further away. But, yeah, I mean, it's not as though we don't have other options in the corridor, you know.
Is the south of Highway 6 piece, is that the segment three or is that the segment one?
Three, in my, yeah, in my.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
And that would be, I think you were talking about the blending. You already talked about that probably alternative one would be the best for that McCallister section. So if we did blend, it's already blending, do the one, and if we did the two for the rest of it. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I received like, oh, at least over 50 emails this morning regarding this conversion, but they, and most of them were bicyclists. Thank you to all of them for their input, but they didn't really talk about which alternative they preferred. Did you get any sense from your meetings with them, what they might want?
You know, generally, so I'm not sure who you spoke to, Pauline, obviously, but I think generally speaking, the folks that I talked to want something done sooner than later.
Right.
I think generally speaking is fair to say. Obviously, option one, the conventional bike lane's the quickest, it's the cheapest, it's the easiest, and it doesn't really pin us down in anything in the future because we're not changing curb lines, we're not, you know, it's striping and signal modifications. So I think, I think it's fair to say that people want things done quicker, but that's not to say that people don't want something else in the future. You know, I think you're, you're going to hear everything across the board in terms of what people want. I will say, generally speaking, as time goes on, I think folks are wanting more of the protected bike lane, you know, with an actual physical barrier. I think that's also a generalization that I can make. So there's the difficult part, is something quick and something relatively more expensive and provides more protection. I think that's mostly what I'm hearing.
I think the safety part of it should be the most important and should consider that.
So I think we should, in my own personal judgment, we should move ahead with what the staff is recommending, but I want to focus on some things. It seems to me there's no significant challenge associated with the first and third sections in doing what's recommended. It's the second section, basically between Kirkwood and Highway 6, that really needs thought, we need to be clear about. But the reasons for doing the road, the three-way, the three-lane conversion are pretty clear, I think. It's really hazardous to use a bicycle on most of Gilbert Street. That's the most important thing, it seems to me. And I've done this 1,000 times. If you try to ride on the sidewalks, which you have to do because it's too hazardous to be on the road, then you're encountering barriers all over the place and conflicting with pedestrians and all that kind of stuff. So that's not an adequate solution. And there are places where pedestrian crossing is really bad. One thing you did not mention is that the consultant's recommending at least a couple of spots where new pedestrian crossings would be clearly marked and that kind of thing, especially near the sanctuary, basically.
Court Street.
Yeah. And also, there are going to be substantial economic benefits, economic development benefits associated with slowing the traffic down some, which makes me think about the speed limit. It's 30 miles an hour right now between Highway 6 and Kirkwood.
About, yeah.
Yeah, so 25. And that would be good for bicyclists, good for pedestrians, and good for development along the corridor. So those are the things I think about primarily. And then the question becomes, what about that segment between, between Prentice-Kirkwood and Highway 6? And if, help me out here, I'm trying to remember, you're recommending, in the short run, we enable this sort of detour over to the Iowa River Trail, while we're also trying to work with developers to obtain the property needed to do a cyclocross? Is that, or which one?
Well, I think it depends on how you all choose to move forward, but I think the, really, the sky's the limit then, Jim. You know, when we get to that section and reconstruction, it's whatever we wanted to make it at that point in time. We're getting about 30 additional feet of right-of-way, if I recall correctly, which will really allow us to do a lot of different things in that section. So it could be a cyclo-track, it could be the parking-protected bike lanes, it could be something totally.
Yeah, we're not talking cyclocross.
No, sorry. On my mind.
Maybe I said that too.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I don't think it pins us into doing something in that section. And again, you know, to my knowledge, there's not a CIP project right now for that reconstruction because we're still acquiring right-of-way. You know, property owners are still dedicating right-of-ways. So what the consultant really said was, you know, we can, if we can get a good way for people to get to, you know, from a conventional bike lane to the park, to use the park, and then come back to Gilbert south of the highway, they thought that'd be a nice way to move forward.
So on the spur of the moment, standing here and getting asked this question, how do you imagine that connection being designed?
There's a, I mean, there's a couple of different ways it could go. And in fact, in the packet, with the cyclo-track option, they actually had sort of a contra-flow bike lane just in the section by Arrow Rental. So if you can picture Kirkwood just north of Arrow Rental there, they would actually reduce one lane, and they would actually get people into that. It would be a kind of a bidirectional cycle track on that little piece, which would take you over to the new park entrance. So I think there are some creative ways that we could get folks over to the park.
Yeah, it's only a block or so.
Yeah, you know, and I think when we, whatever the direction is that I received tonight, I think we can certainly ask the functional design and the team to put some thought to that. They already have, so I think there's some options there. Certainly wayfinding signage, pavement markings, I mean, all the typical things. But I think there might be some creative ways that can get people over to the park.
Kent, I wasn't able to see from the study, but with the cyclocross option, which I believe that's option two, are you able to do projections as to the increase in cycling ridership on the basis of that projection? And related to that, the types of riders that will be riding? Because one of my concerns is, is we have really experienced cyclists, but I think what I'm trying to do is expand, at least that's why I like CIP, and expand the age, the types of cyclists that feel comfortable biking. So as to those two questions, do you have any illumination on that?
You know, I don't think I can answer the first question about the increase in usage. I mean, it's, I don't think I can. As to the second part, you know, I could foresee, even with a conventional bike lane option, you getting, you know, maybe 10-plus-year-olds out there with parents, you know, all ride on the side of the road now in the county with my 10-year-old, and I, you know, with some reluctance, but it's there, and that's with no striping. But I could see you getting some middle-school to high-school-aged kids certainly interested in that. With a cycle track, you know, if there's a physical barrier, I mean, I could see it being more of a family, a family-type facility. It's kind of, you know, it's always in the eye of the beholder, but, you know, if there's a physical separation, I could certainly see, you know, a concrete barrier of some kind, I could certainly see more families wanting to use that. Still got a lot of intersection crossings, but again, they'd have pedestrian signals, just like we do now for pedestrians. So I think, you know, you could certainly see a lot more family use.
I guess then from my vote, I would like to see cyclo-track from Kirkwood to Market because I had a little bit of sticker shock. That's my preferred option, but it seems like it's a pretty expensive option, especially if you do the full thing. My concern is, is that if we adopt the conventional road diet lane, that we'll find ourselves with a similar outcome, perhaps with First Avenue. We won't see the projected increases. It's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison, but I would like the first, because I think this is a low-hanging fruit street and that we need to do it right. And I think if we can really catalyze, as I see a lot of the students in the residential that lives right along there, to facilitate them taking their bikes as opposed to their cars and taking pressure off that, I think that has the greatest potential. That's, and then just defer to staff for the remainder, but that's what I would like to see.
So, Rockney, I actually agree and disagree with you on that. I'm not against, again, having that protected bike lane area. I just don't, speaking, going back to the First Avenue piece, I mean, when I was talking to people, the reason why they don't feel comfortable is there's no protection.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily know I like the cyclo-track option because I feel, I feel like it, yeah, I don't think it's conducive for, you know, amateur bicyclists. And so I guess my, my point, or my, I guess my argument against it is, would there be any reason why we couldn't just do the protected bike lane on both sides?
Its cost, wouldn't that be like $2.8 million?
The, so you're saying to break up the cyclo-track options, you're actually having a barrier on either side?
Correct. Because the $2.8 million was actually having the shared path.
Right.
And, yeah, I would say no to that.
Primarily, it's because of the extra space you need to actually protect the bike so we run out of real estate. So because you've got to have that three- or four-foot area where you can have some protection, the current width won't allow us to have two of those barriers. So with the bidirectional, you have one barrier, right? And then you've got north and south bike traffic on one side of the barrier. If you split that up like a conventional bike lane but then have protection, there's just not enough, because then you've got to have two physical buffers, and there's just not enough space as the roadway exists today.
Well, then my question slash comment to that is, you know, we frequently talk about the size of the streets. Is this conducive for what we have normally suggested for buses to be used on the streets, or do we give ourselves a little bit more space?
With the cyclo-track option that's provided, I think there'd be enough space. I think the minimum lane width is about 11 feet with that option. The issue, and I just, I want everybody to be clear with the cyclo-track option, is we've got two major hurdles, which is the river, the Ralston Creek crossing, and then the Iowa Interstate Railroad. Because on either side of the curb, if you're familiar with the corridor, it's maybe four feet of sidewalk. So if we do move forward with a cyclo-track option, there's going to be some real impediments to having kind of a good cycle track until we address those two obstacles, which will certainly not be cheap.
I'm glad Kingsley brought up the buses because I think somewhere in the report it talked about the number of stops that are along Gilbert, and it's a significant number. And how will that work into the plan as far as the buses having to pull over to their stops?
Under which scenario, Pauline? I'm sorry.
I think it was any of the scenarios. They would need a lane to pull over to their stops.
Right.
And would that be the bike lane? Would that be the north-south-through lane? How would that work?
Right, so this would be similar to First Avenue. It'll be similar to Clinton Street this year if we could get the bike lanes down. Primarily, the bus will either pull over temporarily and block the bike lane, or there could be a potential pull-off provided. But what most bicyclists will tell you is, there's no bike lane now, and they're going around cars and things, you know, so, you know, having to wait for a bus for a minute while they pick someone up typically isn't that much of a nuisance.
Kent, what is, what is the facility on Clinton? You know, I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, in reading this, the, there's an acknowledgement in terms of the safety of using conventional bike lanes. Where would be the nearest bike lane piece that would be at a safer level than what we expect Gilbert's, you know, if we were to do the alternative one? Where would a bike rider looking for a safer, more comfortable ride go?
Right. So Clinton Street would be probably the next option when Clinton Street's completed. And that will go from, basically, the new park from Benton Street all the way north to the President's House, at the north end of Clinton. That is slated to have conventional bike lanes, but certainly a much lower average daily traffic.
And when will that be completed? That's planned in the-
I believe, is that?
July.
July.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll start in July. So, and then I would say the next, so certainly Clinton Street will be much calmer just because the speeds are slower. There's a lot, I mean, there's significantly less amount of traffic. And then again, I think outside of that, you're back onto the Iowa River Corridor Trail, which is really very nice and, you know, about as safe as facilities we can offer for the most part.
That's probably with my level of bike riding skill, that's, that's the route I'm taking most likely. But I, I think alternative one offers, for me anyway, the most overall safety for all users. You know, it certainly would improve things for motorists, also for pedestrians. I don't know if we've talked too much about this, but just the setback from the sidewalk, I feel is a huge improvement. You know, having the traffic lane right up against the curb is, is both dangerous, and then it also, you know, with the lane reduction, you have a shorter crossing distance. So it seems like there are all kinds of benefits overall to safety with, I'd say, the one outstanding issue in my mind is the safety for the bicyclist. And, you know, we really haven't talked about traffic lane widths. I mean, I guess one, and I, this is really kind of, I don't know if we, if I could describe where we are preliminary, but if, you know, we had talked about lane widths recently on those three roadway extensions, and Jim mentioned the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit, and, you know, we went through that exercise where we were basically saying, and I think, you know, there's a correlation between lane width and traffic speed, and when we have on-street bike facilities, that's a critical issue because it affects the safety of the rider. And it seems to me if we were, if there is some wiggle room in terms of lane width, then that, that could add to our buffer, correct?
Certainly.
Which then, depending on conditions as we see them unfold, could then be armored with a protected bike lane component such as the pylon, correct?
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
So I mean, I see some flexibility in terms of the safety level that alternative one provides. And then it has all the other benefits of being cheap, and really improves the safety for everyone.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought up the Clinton Street corridor, and I failed to mention that, because I think what, regardless of what happens on Gilbert Street, we're really starting to develop a nice north-south network.
I love Clinton.
Regardless, because of the new park and because of Clinton Street in July, we're really starting to develop that north-south network, which is, I think, great regardless of how we move forward with Gilbert Street.
Yeah, Clinton now, in my opinion, is a really pleasant ride.
Right, I agree.
In this plan for, in Gilbert Street with the study, are there considerations for improving the crossing towards, through Gilbert Street to Court Street, across Gilbert Street?
There is. It's, I think the mayor had noted that earlier. There is a, what they, it, it's probably not included in the cost estimate, but there is either signalization or maybe a refuge island, something that could be down there.
Yeah. And then one of the things I would kind of emphasize, to think about, is that there's, at least as a bicyclist, that there's a lot of times where a bike lane ends into like a sea of cars, and that's an important thing to consider, especially with that Kirkwood to Highway six. But obviously, the traffic estimates are something to also consider.
So I'm going to bring up one other point that I think about quite a bit with regard to this. I think we should proceed with the road diet as recommended by the staff. It's all one, and, you know, the temporary diversion through Iowa River Trail, partly because I think we need to be careful to minimize adverse, well, negative reaction from the driving public. And we're all drivers in one way or another. So I think we need to have that in mind and proceed in a way that really makes a major step forward with regard to getting this road diet present on Gilbert Street without causing a severe negative reaction that befuddles our whole effort. So, and I know in other cities, different circumstances, different cities and all that, there have been pretty strong negative reactions. So we need to be very thoughtful, sorry, thoughtful about what we're going to proceed with. So anyhow, I recommend that we proceed with alternative one as recommended by the staff.
And I just, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to mention one thing, too. You know, we'll have a functional design that the council can see. You know, this isn't saying this is exactly what's going to happen and we're moving forward. I mean, they still need to design it, they need to make sure the city engineer's okay with it, city manager's okay with it, and you're all okay with it. So certainly, you're not agreeing to putting it on the ground just yet.
I would actually agree with Jim's. I'm glad you brought it up, Jim, because not only am I thinking about the potential reaction, but also it was noticed, or it was mentioned in the report, but, and I know it just because I'm an aggressive driver, you know, the, looking at how traffic patterns would change in relation to the auxiliary streets, for lack of a better word, because I, I mean, Gilbert isn't really an issue for me because I use other streets, because I think Gilbert traffic is bad, and the LOS currently is a D, and so I, you know, I expect the LOS to be somewhat further down the alphabet, and so I will continue my current traffic pattern getting across the city. And so I think that, that, not to give away my trade secret, but I think that's a piece to be concerned about, because I currently just use all the auxiliary streets. I don't even worry about Gilbert because of the level of traffic and it just being tough to get to point A to point B pretty quickly.
I see that as the beauty of the grid. I mean, there is, it does provide flexibility so that when something happens, or you have your own concerns about traffic levels on Gilbert, there are other options for you. I mean, in my view, I'm seeing that now with all the construction work. I'm, I'm taking alternative routes because, you know, you're forced into it, but fortunately, there are alternative routes. I mean, I, you know, I've lived in places where freeways have been removed, and going into that, it was the fear of Carmageddon, it was called. It's going to be Carmageddon when we take down that freeway. It never materialized. You know, so people figure out, if you have a roadway system where people have alternatives, they typically will figure it out. So we could keep talking about this for quite a while, but in the interest of enabling staff to move ahead, do we have sufficient agreement about how to proceed? I see a head nod, head nod, head nod, head nod. So I think we do, and we don't know in the end what we're going to do ultimately with regard to the second segment.
Sure. Yeah, that's understandable, and I think because these are easily implemented, they're easily changed as well. You know, if you decide to do something different in the future.
Okey-dokey. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you very much.
So our next topic is to discuss SUDAS standards for road design.
Jason Havel's going to speak to this, but just as a reminder why we're doing this, we have been looking at adopting SUDAS standards for a couple of years now, and we're getting closer to the point where we're ready to bring that item for a formal vote. But before we do so, we wanted to have a high-level check-in with you, let you know the direction that we're going, have you, you know, do a course correction if needed. That way, when we come back to you for the formal action, hopefully, there's no surprises. So Jason's going to walk you through the main criteria that we're concerned about now, and if you can just keep that in mind. If you're comfortable with where we're going, let us know. If you'd like to see us change course, this would be a good time to raise those concerns.
Hi, Jason.
Good evening. Yeah, like Jeff mentioned, we're kind of just starting out this process. As you'll remember, there's kind of two pieces to the SUDAS piece. There was the specifications that we adopted last, at your last meeting. That really addresses kind of, once you have something designed, you're ready to build it, kind of the specifics of the construction of that project. Now, we're taking basically a step back and looking at the design piece of that. You know, on your agenda, it says, discuss SUDAS standards. I just want to point out, you know, SUDAS kind of has their standard roadway design, they have their standards for complete, what they call complete streets. And so really, what we're looking at is, that's kind of where we were starting, but looking at, how do we turn that into what we want it to be? And so sort of our version of SUDAS, what that design might look like. So I don't think the expectation is that we would just go with that wholly. So it would basically be, how do we revise that to be kind of our version of SUDAS? So with that, just kind of starting out here, just wanted to point out that we've kind of been looking at a number of reference manuals. So you can see the NACTO, SUDAS is in there, ASHTO's in there, ITE as well. So all these manuals kind of have their own version of what they think street design should be and the considerations of that. And so kind of taking all those into consideration, kind of trying to figure out what's the best way to kind of take the best of each one, maybe, and figure out what's going to be our best version of that. So here, you can see a list of items. I'm not going to read them off, but it's just kind of all those things that kind of go into street design. I'm sure there's others that we're forgetting, but these are a lot of the big ones, a lot of the ones that are kind of the main talking points when it comes to street design. So the first one, obviously, is a big one, looking at lane width. What we would be looking at doing is recommending sort of the default lane width would be 10 feet. So that'd be kind of what you would start with in most situations, and that would be for, really for collectors and arterials, and I'll explain what we're going to do with locals kind of further down the page here. But kind of setting 10-foot is our recommended default lane width. With the recommended alternative being 11-foot lanes, and that would be in kind of in those situations where you have transit or truck routes without any sort of bike buffer. So really, that's in situations where you have physical lanes, where there's nowhere for those vehicles to go if they're passing. So if you have two-way traffic and you have one coming in each direction, there's just nowhere for them to go without being kind of caught in that lane. If you do have a bike, a buffered bike lane, the thought being that they would have that buffer area to kind of maneuver through. So really, it's kind of making sure that you have situations where, if you do have these vehicles, they have somewhere to go without impacting other users in other lanes. So really, the 10-foot would be the default, but we would allow for 11-foot in those situations. Also allowed would be shared lanes on local streets, which is really kind of what we have now. And so what it would do, in those local street situations, we'd be looking more at pavement width as a whole versus breaking it down by lane width for traveling lanes and parking. So it'd really be based more on the pavement width as a whole, which is what we do now. You can see our current options are 22 feet, that's two-way traffic with parking on one side, and right now, that's basically limited to loop streets and low-volume cul-de-sacs. So that's really the really low-volume streets where traffic volumes really aren't an issue. More of our standard is really the 26-foot and the 28-foot. The difference being there is the 26-foot would be two-way traffic and then parking on one side, and then 28-foot being two-way traffic with parking on both sides. In those situations, if you were to kind of put a minimum parking lane and minimum travel lanes, the travel lanes would actually have to be below our minimum based on those widths. The next thing is curb offset. And so really, what this is, is it's that distance between what you could consider your travel lane and the back of curb. So it's that curb and gutter section that really would allow for conveyance of stormwater. So it's kind of that area that would be adjacent to the travel lane and include the curb section as well. What we'd be looking at would be a recommendation for one and a half feet. A lot of places call out for two and a half feet, so we've kind of narrowed that up a little bit. Still allowing for that conveyance of stormwater and not having that impact the travel lane during heavier rain events. We do call out an allowable width of zero feet, so basically eliminating that curb offset when there's a bike lane or parking lane or some other non-travel lane on the street. So basically, we would allow for sort of overlap of that in one of those situations. Next thing is clear zone, and really, this is kind of that area between the travel lane and any obstacles or obstructions that would be on the side of the road. The biggest one people really think about is utility poles. So this is kind of having that area next to the travel lane to allow for somebody, were an errant vehicle were to go out of their lane, that they're not going to hit something and cause either damage or injury. So we are recommending six-foot on street with, streets with speed limits greater than 25 miles an hour, and then reducing that down to three feet on streets with speed limit of 25 mile-an-hour or less. And then we do call out a minimum, which is our current minimum, of a foot, one and a half feet. Basically, in no situation would we want it to drop below that and just kind of have that be sort of the floor of what we would want for clear zones. One deviation that we note here is there are some funding sources that require differences in the clear zone, so we would have to follow those requirements if they're required for funding that we are using for our project. Curb radius is the next one. And so this is, you can kind of see there on the illustration at the top there, it kind of shows the difference between a tighter curb radius and a wider curb radius. And what it really does, the tighter the curb radius, it kind of sucks in those edges of the pavement, narrows up the crosswalk. If you have the wider curb radius, it's a little, it's obviously a larger radius, so it allows for a larger vehicle path. It does result in a longer crossing distance. So what we've kind of looked at here is areas that are really in the downtown area, narrowing that up to, or reducing that down to a 10-foot radius, so that would be the tighter option, and then going with a 25-foot radius in, basically, outside of the downtown area or areas. What I have kind of called out here is really in areas where it's fully paved, so you have curb ramps, but there's, the whole corner is paved, that would be areas where we'd likely have the tighter radius. And then in areas where you have curb ramps, but then you have grass, basically on both sides of the curb ramps or in the middle, that would be the wider curb radius. Part of the reasoning for that is, if you do have vehicles go, whether it's trucks or whatever, it's not going to likely have as much of an impact on the paved corners. You're not going to see it as much, it shouldn't be much, as much of an issue. On the unpaved corners, you're going to see more broken ramps, you're going to see rutting. We occasionally get complaints of vehicle rutting in those areas where it's grass, and who repairs it, and how do we deal with that? So the thought being that the downtown areas really are, there's, you're likely going to have the higher pedestrian volumes, which would benefit from the shorter crossings, and also likely to have more of the paved quadrants. Design speed, obviously, is another popular one. Here, we have kind of just two bullet points. The first one being that design speed would match the speed limit. In the past, one school of thought is that you would have your design speed basically be, whether it's five miles per hour or some measure higher than your, your speed limit. And the thought then was, it's kind of a factor of safety. So it's designed for a higher speed, even though your speed limit would be at a certain level. So we would propose that the design speed would match the speed limit, which is pretty common, I think, for the more, more current reference manuals. And then we had recommended a blanket design speed of 25 mile-an-hour for all roads, based on, partially on past conversations and some of the discussions that have taken place. I know there's also been discussion of potentially looking at 20 mile-an-hour design speed, so that would be an option. Obviously, when we talk design speed, one of the big things that we look at for, from a design standpoint, is curves, you know, horizontal curves, vertical curves. That's kind of where design speed plays a lot into it. A lot of urban streets, you don't have a lot of curves, so it's going to be probably a little different process, and so we would have to figure out how we want to do that. But that would be an option, obviously, to look at 20 miles an hour, if that's something that we want to do. I think it would be helpful if that's the direction we want to go, to get some guidance on what specifically you'd want to see with that. Is there specific areas, is there specific types of roadways we'd want to see, just to kind of get a better idea of how we might be able to accomplish that through the design? So.
And if I could add into that, Jason, because we had this conversation at a staff level, 20, 20 miles per hour is pretty difficult to design, too, if you don't have the curvature in the road. What you're probably talking about here is creating, intentionally creating those give-way situations where you know that there's going to be some street parking, and you just know when you've got two vehicles coming over that- when you've got two vehicles coming over that one's going to have to pull over. That happens naturally on some of our, on some of our streets when you get two cars parked on either side. But we don't design for that situation now as being the norm. And if we go down to 20, really, I think the only way to really achieve that 20 is to intentionally create those conflicts on the street.
Jason, you talked about, you know, part of the difference in the design is like the curves and things like that. Is there, would you say that there's a significant difference in designing, say, for 25 mile an hour speed limit versus a 35 mile an hour speed limit?
I don't think you're going to see a significant difference. You know, your curves will probably be a little longer, a little, the radius will be a little bit larger, but I don't think it's going to be significantly different.
I raise a question because, I mean, in our last meeting, or the meeting before, whatever, and we talked about the new arterials and the consensus of the council was 25 miles an hour on those. And I can tell you, I don't believe that that's the will of the community. As I've talked to people, they're quite shocked that we would look at out on Macaulay Street Boulevard or American Legion, that we're looking at 25 miles an hour. As I've even talked with some of our police officers, they're like, there's no way that's going to happen and there's no way we can keep it enforced all the time. I think when people look at arterials, they look at them as, for vehicles, a way to get from point A to point B, not as a residential street that is 20 to 25 miles an hour. And I'm concerned that we don't start doing designs based on one council's perception that lock us in for the next 30 or 40 years when potentially the bulk of the people in this community totally disagree with that concept. And so that's why I'm kind of asking how much difference there is and so how much leeway we really would have with speed limits in the future.
And I think it's going to depend on what type of road you're talking about. You know, the grid pattern, really not much because it's going to have to be, you know, like Jeff mentioned, either giveaway situation or, you're not going to design a street where people are going to go exactly 20 the entire stretch. So it's going to be kind of more, you may go a little faster during a stretch, but there's periodic checkpoints where you're not going to be able to go above that is likely how you're going to get to that situation. You know, if we do design, say for example, the example you mentioned, if you were to design for 25, obviously if you do that, you're going to, and if, take Macaulay Street for example, those curves would not be sufficient to just simply raise the speed limit to, say, 35. You know, how much would you have to change? It's tough to say exactly, but I mean, there would be a certain, at least in the curves, that would have to be, likely be revised to change the speed limit to raise it. Next thing is on-street parking. So what we're looking at here is having 8-foot parking lane be the preferred width and then allowing for a minimum down to 7-foot. So again, it's kind of the goal being 8-foot, but there would be, it would be allowable to go to 7-foot. Street trees, this is one that we don't really do, or don't really deal with right now in our roadway design. So the first thing I would mention is that with that, it would likely come with the requirement that this would be part of either development or redevelopment and including that in what the developer would include with their project. Looking at a preferred minimum parkway of 9 feet, obviously for trees, a little wider would be even better, but having kind of 9-foot be the preferred minimum to allow for a number of options for tree types. Obviously, it's not mentioned here, but it kind of goes without saying that this also would be subject to the forestry division's guide, I guess, is for diversity of tree type and that kind of stuff. But we would allow for a minimum parkway of 6-foot. And talking to forestry, it does limit the options that you'd be able to have there. So obviously the goal would be to stick with the 9 or above, but we would allow for 6-foot parkways and still have street trees if it needs to be done to fit them in. One limitation that would be there would be overhead utility lines. This is probably more of an issue in kind of a redevelopment or that type of situation where there's overhead existing. Obviously with new subdivisions, it's going to be underground to start, but just something to keep in mind. Bike lanes. So the main thing here with bike lanes, obviously, is it would be per the master plan. So that's what we would really use as our guide for where those bike lanes would go, kind of what type we'd be looking at. But if it does call for bike lanes, the design that we would recommend would be a preferred width of 6 feet. So that'd be a 6-foot width of the actual bike lane. We would allow for it to go down to the minimum of 5 feet, which is what we have in some locations now. We also called out a buffered bike lane width of 7 and 1/2 feet. I don't know at this point, one thing we'd want to work through is whether that's a 6-foot lane and a 1 and 1/2 foot buffer, if we want to widen that buffer and go more towards the minimum bike lane, we could work through that. But I think that 7 and 1/2 foot width is probably a good number for kind of that buffered bike lane width. And then with separated bike facilities, I think at this point, we would want to see something that would be a design that would be specific to any separated bike. So that would be the ones that actually have the barriers and are physically separated. I just don't think that we have a good handle on what those would be throughout the community. So we'd want to see kind of design-specific for those situations. Sidewalk. Right now, our minimum width for a sidewalk for new installations is 5-foot. I think we would plan to leave that as kind of the minimum width with the preferred width being 6-foot along collectors and arterials. We've done that in some locations and I think it makes sense with anticipating that pedestrian volumes would be higher, allowing for that extra width. And then on arterials, also allowing for one side to be 10-foot sidewalk. Now, a lot of times it's 8-foot on one side as part of the bike master plan. They had recommended bumping that up to 10 feet. Additional cost wouldn't be all that significant since you're going to be out there constructing it anyway. So just kind of going from 8-foot to 10-feet would be the recommendation. And again, that would be on one side. Subbase. This one's not so much, I guess, you know, it's not something that most people think about with street design. The main reason I wanted to mention this is this would be a change for subdivisions especially and new developments. Currently, we do not require this. The biggest benefit here is this allows for a drainable base, so it allows the water to get out from underneath the pavement, which is, has a, potentially has a large impact on the longevity of the pavement and reducing maintenance costs. It just, water getting trapped between the subgrade and the pavement has the potential, again, to cause a lot of issues over time and reducing the lifespan of the pavements, which obviously increases maintenance costs. So this is pretty standard, I think, for a lot of communities. So we would kind of just be making that switch to this. It's recommended by the professional organizations that deal with these, this pavement. So I think really, again, it's more just kind of an FYI that I think it's something that makes a lot of sense for us to do. We've been talking about it for a while, so I think now is a good time to do it with the adoption of SUDAS. It just kind of makes sense. I think a lot of developers know it's coming at some point, and so now's the time. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and discussion. Again, this, at this point, it's really just kind of a menu of items. We don't have specific cross-sections necessarily at this point, but just trying to get some feedback on the individual items and what we may be good on, what we may need to work on and kind of get some feedback on that.
Well done, Jason. It's a really terrific overview and the amount of precision you've provided is also very helpful. But we only have about five minutes to discuss this. We may have to return to it after our formal meeting, which wouldn't be a great thing for you, I think. So does anybody want to raise any particularly key points right now, knowing we might have to come back to this after the formal meeting?
Well, I would say, you know, it was a good presentation. I guess my difficulty is, it would be most helpful for me in understanding what's being recommended if I had an idea of the differences between some of the standards. You know, we've discussed NACTO, for example, as one standard. And how do these recommendations compare to those standards? Because I, you know, again, it's sort of where are we going as a community in terms of the designs? And I understand that, you know, Iowa City and most communities in effect are struggling with the fact that we have basically parts of cities which, and towns, which are more pedestrian-oriented and some that are more auto-oriented. But even in the auto-oriented, you have, particularly in residential areas, questions about safety for the residents who live there. So it's difficult for me to really comment on where your recommendations fall.
Well, and I think it's going to be a situation where I don't think there's any of them that are going to tell you this is what you do. It's going to be, you know, here's allowable from, I think some of them go as low as 9-foot in certain situations up to probably 14 feet. So I think NACTO tends to point towards 10 feet is kind of the, I think, I would probably even go as far as they probably would, they would recommend. ASHTO and SUDAS probably are a little wider than that, probably more in the 11 and 12-foot range. But again, they kind of come at it from different angles. You know, the ASHTO and SUDAS probably tend to be a little more auto-oriented. NACTO is probably a little bit more on the bicycle-ped focus. So I don't think that you're going to see a lot of conflict between them as far as one saying you can't do what another is recommending. I think they've all kind of had that, but certainly we can put something together that would, and I know the Moyn MPO had done something similar to that. But again, it's which way you're kind of looking at it.
One particular one that I've really struggled with is the curb offset because you're basically, you know, what we're talking about is effective with respect to lane widths, the effective lane widths. And when you add that offset, the curb lane is 1 and 1/2 feet wider than what we're calling lane width. So it's, even if it were 10, it's going to 11.5. I don't really see a value in the curb offset. It seems to create, you know, you've created lane widths which are pretty much de facto 11 and 1/2.
And one thing to keep in mind is that would really only be in areas too where you don't have bike facilities and you don't have parking. So any new facility that would have bicycle lanes or parking would not have that curb offset.
Right.
So, and I don't have that, what the number of those would be for new streets, but my guess is that a lot of those would have one of those two, and so it wouldn't be an issue on those.
Does anybody else want to make any kind of quick comments right at the moment?
Was Jason going to be here later on? I hate to make Jason stay later.
I can be here.
Can you? And we're going to have a long meeting, I think, sorry.
That's all right. I've already warned my wife.
Sure you don't want to roll us over to our next work session?
Is there anything that we can do for questions? I mean, questions that can be submitted and get some feedback from that standpoint?
Well, we can do whatever you like. Jason can stay, I can field questions. It's okay to have staff stay when you're working through agenda items.
I'm just thinking by the time we get through our formal meeting, we may not want to spend a whole lot of time on this.
I think you're right about that. I think it'd be better not to return to this tonight.
I would like to have more time to refresh my understanding of the, say, the NACTO.
Yeah, so let's ask Jason to come back, not tonight, but probably at our next meeting or maybe the one right after that, so we can pin this down more. All right. I want to toss out something for the rest of us to think about, for all of us to think about. In itself, roadway design is, seems like it has, it's not the kind of thing we ought to be talking about. But to talk about roadway design is to talk about what kind of vision we have for development of new land, new properties that are, you know, that will be emerging within our city. And we can continue doing things the way we have done them for 30-plus years or not. And I think at the, at least a majority of our council, maybe everybody, I don't know, wants to make a shift. It's hard to do, trying to make a shift away from the way things have been done for a long time, without being really clear about the connection between roadway design and land development standards and all the stuff, the work that OpTicos has been doing for us and may be doing for us in the future. This is a tricky thing and we need to proceed thoughtfully about it and be clear about what we're trying to do and try to communicate it as effectively as we can to the general public.
And values within embedded professional engineering standards. So we're not coming up with these. We are selecting among various professional standards. So I think that's the key point, too.
Okay. I think given the time, we probably should break off there. We'll come back to, well, we won't clarify agenda items yet again. Unless, we'll touch on it. If there's something that needs to be said, we'll say it. And otherwise, we'll return to the work session after the formal meeting by discussing the information packets. Let's move to the, move to the May 17 packet.
I did point out that the IP4, the 2018 Party in the Park schedule is there, so if people want to know when those are, it's a great piece to print out and put on your refrigerator, so you don't miss any of them.
Awesome. They're awesome.
IP2, does anyone have any chance to speak with Mazaher about the Richards Express service?
I didn't speak to Maz about it, but I did speak to the person in charge of it. I feel uncomfortable about it.
I just felt.
I thought the same thing, and so that's why I was wondering if she had anything else to offer that people had talked to her about. It didn't seem tailored enough to Iowa City.
I had some questions for like Eleanor as far as the legalities of it. I mean, would they need to be licensed? Are they basically like a chauffeur? It's not a taxi service.
So I'm not supportive of it. I just wanted to see if anyone.
Just, no.
Because I wanted to give fair hearing to that, though.
I had some interesting comments about West Philadelphia, born and raised.
But not related to Iowa City, okay.
Never mind. It was in my notes.
So my issue's been addressed.
Moving along, how about the May 20, well, anything else on May 17? All right, May 24?
On IP5, I just had some questions for Jeff, just being a little naive. If you could kind of explain quickly difference between an RFP and an RFQ.
Qualifications.
Yeah, with a request for proposals, we know more or less what we want. We can define the scope and the consultants will come back and respond to that scope and say, we'll deliver that scope of services for X amount of dollars. And then we select those consultants, not only based on price, but also based on experience and the team members and any other criteria that we define. So it's not a hard bid, but it's able to be defined. Request for qualifications is geared towards selecting the most qualified company without a very weighted look at price. And the reason I'm suggesting that we do this route is because it is very difficult at this stage, when the University of Iowa and Correville want to participate, for us to fully define the scope. We feel like we need to engage with the consultants to learn from them and say, here's a situation where there's three different agencies, we have similar interests, but different in some respects. Help us craft a scope. And then we would select the person that we felt most comfortable with. We would still have to request some pricing, basic pricing information upfront, but the selection is much more geared towards the qualifications and the fit of the consultant than the price itself.
Okay.
It's a little different, but it's also a little bit different to embark on a study with three different agencies who may have different objectives that they want to get out of the study.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, then.
I think it's a good way to move forward. I liked your explanation of why you wanted to approach it that way, so I'm supportive of that.
Yeah, me too.
Jeff, is one of the things that they're going to evaluate is, people always talk about this issue of combining services between Correville, University of Iowa, and City of Iowa City. And it always seems to be that that's sort of a simple thing to raise, but very complicated to implement.
Yeah.
Is that something that'll be scoped out? They're not interested in that?
No, we're not, we're not looking at a merger, per se. What we would be looking at is situations where routes overlap. So you think of Iowa City buses and, well, Correville, but more with CAN bus. There's a lot of the same buses going down the same roads that aren't making the same stops. And of course, there's difference in fee structures and pass with CAN bus being free based on student fees and us having a fee. But I think there are some situations. But I think there are some situations where we want to explore whether it makes more sense for the city to accept a student ID as opposed to running CAN bus down there. And perhaps there's some, it makes more sense to run a CAN bus out into some neighborhoods that are heavily populated with student housing. So those are the types of things we want to explore. Again, it's just hard to kind of define that at this stage in the process.
Makes sense. Sure. Come up.
Can I just speak up here? See, I just want to make a short comment on CAN bus. I think, to the best of my knowledge, they're not actually allowed to operate off-campus, like, off-university property for the most part, so anything like that would probably have to be covered by Iowa City Transit or anything that's not CAN bus.
Yeah. Those are issues that we would work out. They travel off-campus quite a bit to get to other campus destinations. So if you think of the River Landing area where they have hospital or the Oakdale Research Park, or even out to where the student housing is on the west side of town, I'm drawing a blank on the name there, the old.
Oh, is it the Aspire on?
The Aspire. They would pass through a lot of non-campus areas, and that's what we want to explore, particularly on those routes. How do we work together on those?
IP number six, the overview of the senior center membership and participation. Thank you so much for the very informative, short memo.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Gives me better insight into how many people are members, et cetera, and where they come from and all that.
There's, it just kind of shows the breadth of, just a snapshot of what is offered and how many people are involved and how much expansion we might still be able to have.
Very impressive number of volunteers and classes and membership. I think I might have asked for this originally because I was concerned, I was hearing from folks outside of Iowa City that since we raised the price, they weren't going to be a paid dues member any longer. And it does look like 83% Iowa City, 17% Johnson County, but I don't think that it affected it that much. It is a concern.
Pretty close to what it's been.
Yeah. Right.
IP number four, there's under the other topics, number eight, review of the riverfront crossings form-based code, including density bonus provisions and height allowances. My understanding of our procedures has always been, if we're adding things on here, that's a council decision of at least like three or four council members.
It's my understanding that the mayor has the ability to add topics to the agenda, which is why it's on there.
I don't, because we've never considered this the agenda. I mean, we've always, our past practice has always been that topics going on, our work session, were things that we discussed as a council and at least three members put those on. I'm just saying, that has always been our past practice.
Well, I thought, it was my understanding, the mayor had the ability to put this kind of thing on the agenda. That's why it's there. If that's not correct, then, you know, we need four people who would want, or was it at least?
Yeah, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with it being there. I'm, you know me, I tend to focus on process and try and be consistent with things like that. I've never seen us do this before. I thought the change in the charter for the mayor being able to put things on the agenda, I guess my interpretation was always that that was the formal agenda, not topics that we were going to discuss at a work session.
I thought that applied to the council members. Council members needed the two additional to put something on the agenda but the mayor, but I could be wrong on that.
I guess it depends on how you interpret agenda.
I'm looking at Eleanor, or, so I would, I would, in general, I would agree with Susan's comment. I mean, just my recollection has always been that way. Doesn't mean that it is supposed to be different. I just think if it is different, I mean, to know that it's different.
I didn't go back, I didn't look at the charter language. I would guess if I did, it probably strictly refers to the formal agenda, but I'd have to go back and look. In this case, I think it's whatever the council wants. I mean, right before item eight was added, it's always been three council members or staff, and frankly, staff adds quite a bit on here, more than council does. But I guess in my view, Susan, if the mayor would have the authority to add agenda items to the formal agenda, that, that's again, for you guys to decide, but I would think that this is a step down there.
Let me suggest a way to proceed. With regard to this particular item, I'd like to ask if there are two other council members who would agree to have it put on the work session. Beyond that, I would ask Eleanor and/or Jeff to look at the charter and give us a sense of whether the mayor has the power to do this. I mean, we need to know that for procedural reasons. So are there two others who would like to have this on the agenda, on the work session, pending work session agenda?
This is number eight, under other topics?
Yeah. Yeah. Review of RFC, riverfront crossings form-based code, including density bonus provisions and height allowances.
Yeah, I'll support that.
Anyone else?
I would too.
Okay, so the twofold, two-step kind of thing. All right.
Just want to point out why we're on that item. Sorry, the July 3 work session, if I understood today's meeting correctly, will have the SUDAS discussion, will have the P&amp;Z consult on Penn and Crest Garden Apartments, assuming they're available, and then the Prairie Duchenne rezoning, discussing city assistance. So that would take that July 3 agenda. That's on, okay?
And we're all going to be here.
Put it back, Prairie Duchenne.
There was a request for a future work session agenda to talk about city assistance for those.
Oh, for the additional line material assistance.
Yes.
Yeah, I want the Prairie Duchenne on. I don't know if anyone else does, but.
That would, that'd be a full work session on July 3, if you're all comfortable with those three items.
Is there any reason why we couldn't go earlier? Is there any reason why we couldn't go earlier?
You mean, you're talking about the meeting itself as opposed to?
Give me, give me like 4:30, is that what you have in mind?
Or four. All right. I may need to come back to you on that. Sorry, we're a little sidebar here, but the consultants for the climate plan are already booked on July 3, so we're going to have to work that out.
Let's talk about tomorrow. Yeah, we understand there are things that we want to discuss.
And the other thing is, we want to try and get a special meeting scheduled for the third vote on the Camp Garden.
Okay, anything else? Hearing, nothing else? I think we're finished with our work. No, we're not. We have the one last thing. So, excuse me, the, whether there's any information about.
Committees.
Updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Maybe, John, could you start, please?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Rockney?
I asked John Kenyon, and he just basically reaffirmed how well the conference was, where they invited all the UNESCO Cities of Literature, and they developed a real esprit de corps and all as well with the City of Literature. No other pending events, though, for City of Literature.
King, Joey?
I had about an hour's worth of stuff to talk about, but nothing is done.
McDonald's is going to close 11, right?
I think we have MPO tomorrow, don't we? Just a reminder. MPO JC tomorrow. And then, I don't have anything, ECICOG meets this Thursday. Then I'll have something next meeting.
Okay.
I won't be at MPO. I have an alternate. Leave Eleanor's going to my spot. I have a conflict. The Executive Committee for the Access Center had a meeting with individuals from Cedar Rapids who run the federally qualified healthcare clinic up there, and so we're just having discussions with them because Johnson County is part of their area to serve, and so looking at if there are possibilities working together. So nothing firm at all, but just exploring options there.
Susan, I do have a quick question. How does what happened at the state level affect what's currently happening right now?
We don't know for sure. The rules and regulations are still being written. We have a couple of people on the steering committee, or at least one on the steering committee, another person who's coming quite a bit, Jeffrey Lauer from the Brain Injury Group, who's involved in those, writing those regulations. We're very concerned about some of those regulations and how they can, they might impact the development of our access center and whether we will or will want to fall under the state's definition of an access center.
Got you.
So suffice it to say, it's complicated, but we have people who understand a lot more about that stuff than I do, who are on top of it.
Yeah, seemingly endless complications, huh?
Yes.
Well, I have one thing to mention. Pauline and I hope will be meeting with Janet Godwin and Lori Rutland of the School Board on June 5, Monday, June 5. And we'll talk about school renovations, we'll talk about their redistricting process, probably talk about our proposed annexation policy. I look forward to the conversation. All right, I think that's it for the night, folks. Thank you.